Edgecombe County is to take over that gap funding from the city of Rocky Mount. That's the big thing, it's gonna start July 1. It's a huge budget driver for us as a county as we're preparing our budget for next year. Also starting July 1, Nash Rocky Mount Schools is to be named the Nash School Administrative Unit. That was specifically put in the legislation. Nash Rocky Mount Board cannot file legal action against Nash County regarding funding for 10 years. It started when this became legislation. So that will run through fiscal year 2027. And if Edgecombe County fails to provide the required funding, it will trigger a county line merger. It goes into some detail about the mechanism to make it happen, how we do that, redistricting and all of that. So those are the main components of session law 2016-14. So out of all of those things in there, the two with the biggest budget implications for us now is the second and third, and that is us providing our proportionate share of capital and us taking over that gap funding from the city of Rocky Mount. So I want to talk about that first one. So so far, the only new capital improvement that the Nash Rocky Mount school system has brought to the table was they did some repairs to a building at the Nash Community College campus for their early college. And we had to share in the cost of that, our share was just under $83,000. And that was all finished up last fiscal year. So far, that's the only thing that has been brought to the table, except, as I'm sure everybody's familiar with, there is a plan to build a new school and renovate. Elementary school, my understanding is that their plan is to consolidate three schools into the one school. Right now, their total projected cost is $20 million. $10 million of that is coming from lottery funds, other $10 million will come from local funding. And so Nash County plans to do a borrowing to cover the cost of that $10 million. And right now, we don't know exactly what our share of that will be, what our share of that debt service will be. It will depend on the terms of the loan. But we expect it to be somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 annually to support this new school that's proposed to be built and renovated. So it's sort of open in it at this point, the timeline for them starting that new school. I'm sure most of you and all of you have read articles in the paper about their discussion on building it. We expect that it likely will not hit our budget for next fiscal year. But it could if they speed that process up. But that's still under term. Second thing regarding current expense. And I want to just real quick show you a little math as to how that gap in current expense is calculated. So this is the formula for current year gap payment. And so they basically just take Nash County's current expense appropriation to Nash Rocky Mount school system, a little over $20 million. Then they look at the number of students in the school system from last year's or the previous year's numbers. And simply divide that, it comes up to be a little over $1,500 per pupil. Then we look at what Edgecombe County's appropriation is for current expense to Nash Rocky Mount schools, divide that by the number of students from the previous year's count, 1670. That's what our per pupil allocation comes out to be. So the difference between those two is a $255.85 gap per pupil. And then just taking that number and multiplying it by those 1,600-plus students. And so the city of Rocky Mount's gap payment this year is $427,000. That fluctuates some each year, depends on what the final budget program is, what the number of students were the previous year. But it has always been consistently somewhere around $400,000 plus or minus. So that's what Rocky Mount is paying this year. And about this is what they will not be paying next year, that Edgecombe County is gonna have to cover that difference. And so those really are the two main things that we are staring at right now is those capital costs as well as this gap in current expense. And we're gonna have to start preparing for this current fiscal year and the following years. So I wanted to be brief in my presentation, just to be kind of straightforward, give you an update, some background on that. Happy to answer any questions.
So I want to say good evening and I want to thank you all for joining us. I think this is a great time for us to have a conversation and to begin some deep thought about what this would mean for our school system and for our county. We appreciate you giving Edgecombe an opportunity to share our perspective and just kind of look deeply. I will say, as we started to unpack, the present got bigger and bigger, right? And so we know that we don't have all the answers tonight. But what we want to do is we want to just kind of give you some insight into what we shared. Chairman Higgins has asked that I be brief. We are gonna try. I have a team with me and I am gonna ask them, just take a point of privilege and ask them, she can introduce themselves. We've had our board introduce ourselves.
Yeah, thanks, I'm Susan Hake and I am the new president of the new legislature.
I'm Erin Swanson, Director of Innovation.
Jerome Williams, Director of Maintenance.
Laura Leary, Finance Officer.
Charlotte Pittman, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Abby Tuchel, Assistant Superintendent of Strategic Leadership.
Rose Cole, Executive Assistant Superintendent and Board Liaison.
Deborah Steigman, Board Attorney.
So again, thank you all for coming. Each one, not all of them, but several of them will come up and share just from your perspective. I just want to give you three outcomes that we hope tonight. We want to share our current reality and then again, remind you of where we are initially in Edgecombe. Two, we want to provide like an oversight of assumptions, options. If you see your county or documents, you'll see some of the options that we thought about. Those are not all the options. There could be 10 more options, but these are some that we want to share tonight. And then three, we want to outline items for consideration. There are so many pieces to this puzzle that for us to be able to put this in one document and talk about it in one evening is just not possible. So again, we added items for consideration almost in every section as we talk through this. So this will be a little overview of what we're gonna cover tonight. I'm gonna do a little overview, I'll share some scenarios. Ms. Swanson and Ms. Tuchel will talk about curriculum and professional development. Mr. Williams will talk about maintenance and some of the things that he's discovered. Ms. Leary and Ms. Pittman will talk about financing and staffing patterns. And then we'll close with some considerations, questions or comments that you all may have. And what I will do is I'll ask, maybe as others are talking, if things come up, if you all will capture any questions that might come, just so we can address those. If not tonight, then we'll have to come back together and address those. So if we look just at the overview, we know the decision to demerge or bring Rocky Mount students into Edgecombe County schools is significant. We know it's a big consideration. For us, when we think about best case scenario, not just for the students in Rocky Mount, but for us as well, is to kind of keep where we are, leave it as is. Why do I say that? Look at the three benefits. And these are the things that we've kind of processed through. Least disruptive for ECPS and Rocky Mount students and families. No cost of renovation, no redesign, no building, no planning time or cost required. So of course, in our view, that's the easiest way to do it. We feel like that's the best case scenario, but that might not be reality. So again, we have to look at some of those scenarios and kind of unpack some of them. So this is kind of our current overview. If the current students in Rocky Mount would join us at ECPS, we'd have to begin. So we've begun some development and options for exploration with our community. Each of these draft plans that you'll see tonight provides Rocky Mount students with high-quality innovative learning experiences, which minimizes the impact on our current ECPS community and costs to the county. So again, as you're thinking and looking at these scenarios, think in terms of our current staff, our current schools, the capacity that's in those schools and how that might impact if we have about 1,800 students join our community. We believe that all of Edgecombe County students deserve an excellent education and we look forward to this planning process. So again, the emphasis is if this happens, when this happens, we have to. We can't just jump into it, we can't do it quickly. We've got to plan out what will happen and how this needs to happen. I will stop just for a quick second here and I want to just kind of give us a little bit of feedback on some of the things that we're doing. So I just want to take a minute and I want to highlight some of the successes that we've had experience since our last meeting together. So just a couple of things, and I could do 10, 20, but just hit four or five things. So we've had IBM and we had several professionals come in and they stayed with our county for 30 days. So IBM came in, they did some data analysis with us, they helped us set up kind of a tracking system. And again, why do I say that? It's important, they're the only school system in the nation that they've done that good. They selected us based on the data, based on the things that we've done, based on our innovation and our openness to want them to come in and support us. Sox Elementary School, we've started a STEM lab there. And that's something that we feel like is important for our students. We are starting slow, but we have gotten a grant for that and we started that STEM lab. We rebuilt Princeville Elementary School right behind us and we've also rebuilt the Professional Development Center. Last year, we had a micro school that was housed at North, but it was Phillips and North students. This year, we've taken that micro school and kind of expanded it into North Phillips School of Innovation and all ninth and 10th graders experienced that same type of schedule that they had for the micro school. When we think about some of the pieces that we're talking about, it took a significant amount of time to make those things happen and to make them run well. We learned a lot from that, but we also learned from if we go too fast, we don't get the best results. So again, I'm sharing this story as in where we are currently in Edgecombe. We're on the rise, we're moving forward. As our curriculum posts will come up, they will share with you data around our schools and you'll see some improvements that have happened over the last three years. So here's current status concerning Rocky Mount. We would be adding nearly 1,800 students to our school system. This is equivalent to a small school system, okay? The four Rocky Mount schools that we're talking about, they have currently a letter grade of F. Now, we have some F schools as well. We have two out of 14. In the past, if you look at our data, we've had more than two. We've continued to pull our academics data in a positive manner and move us along. So this would add four schools that are currently a letter F, according to DPI. Third bullet, we propose a minimum of 12 months and ideally 24 months for this transition period to occur and for us to get it right. And then the last bullet, students already enrolled in Nash Rocky Mount Middle School or High School would remain at their schools until graduation. So again, this is a proposal, this is something that we thought would be best, the best way to transition in if that's what we decide we need to do, okay? And then again, just sharing some of the, what I mean by success stories here is we've had some changes that we've made in our school system. And just want you to kind of bring you back to this Martin Millennium Academy. So that's a local school, immersion school. We started that process and what it did in that second bullet is it eliminated some transitions from Tarver High School feeder pattern. So if you recall, Stocks was a pre-K 3, Tillo was a 4-6, Martin Middle School was a 7-8. And so we did away with that when we implemented Martin Millennium Academy. When we implemented Martin Millennium Academy, which is a local school, it took us about 18 months to make that happen. So we went to other school systems, we went to visit other schools that had a global perspective and we did the research and the studying behind it. We saw what they did that worked well, we saw what we needed to do that worked well. So again, these things took us some time. It wasn't overnight, it wasn't in 30 days, it wasn't in six months. It was about 18 months. We had many community meetings where we talked to parents, we talked to the community, we talked to students to see, was this the right thing to do for our community? North Phillips School of Innovation, that was about a 12-month process that we went through, through the transient where we learned what did this need to look like, how is this gonna benefit our students? So again, it takes time to get it right. And then the ECPS Design Cohort, that started this year. We have about five schools. And what they're doing is they're working on how to redesign their school to make it better and to support students and give them some additional options in learning. And again, this is a process. So this will take us about a year or two to for this to come to fruition. And then when we see Princeville Stadium, we know that rebuilding Princeville took some time, but we didn't want to rebuild Princeville and bring it back exactly how it was. We wanted to bring it back better. So again, time matters, having planning time and the proper funding to make all these things happen work for us. Okay? You all have shared, Eric, you've shared a little bit of this, but I just wanted to stop here. So you saw some of the numbers, elementary, middle, high school, Tar River, what that looked like, how we kept to the 1,800 students and which grade levels get the most done. So I'll stop here and just give you an opportunity to read. Now, when you think about 1,700, 1,800 students being added to our current enrollment, that's an increase of about 30%. So we are a little under 6,000 students. So that would be an increase of 30% students joining our school system. At the bottom, these are some of the kind of primary costs for planning. We feel like we need one additional person to help lead this change. If we're adding 1,800 students, they don't just come in, we need to make sure we're planning for those students. So are we going out, meeting with community members? Are we meeting with community leaders? Are we having focus groups with parents and students and staff members, once we know this would be in play? So that would take some time while still running our current school system. So that's why we said an additional person to go with that. Under that, you'll see travel for inspiration visits. So we'd want to make sure, if we're gonna add 1,800 students to our school system, that they don't just come in and necessarily just blend into everything that's going on. What are the needs of those students? What impact do we want to make sure that we have on their life? What are some things that we want to do to assure that they can have a positive experience in Edgecombe County? At the bottom, you'll see the community meeting costs, curriculum purchases for the coming year. Because some of the purchases and curriculum pieces we already have in place, that's for the 14 schools and about 6,000 students that we currently have. If we add 1,800 students, there's some other curriculum materials that we need for those students as well. And then at the bottom, with the consultant and the contract fees, there are other pieces and studies that we want to do, again, to make sure we did it right. This is a heavy lift and we want to make sure that we do it right and that we do our best work. And so again, taking the time to plan and making sure that we're giving them opportunities that they deserve. Here are some benefits, or possible benefits. So with the benefits, there's some possible cost savings with maintenance, utilities, some personnel. Everything would not have to be replicated. So there's some things that could overlap, consolidating some of our operations now, possibly repurposing some of our buildings, aligning instructional programs and vision, increase community involvement, increase student achievement. So again, these are things that we would have to work through and figure out, how do we make this happen? But again, everything doesn't have to be duplicated when we're adding 1,800 students. But there are some things that would have to be, so there's a possibility of some savings there. And we were exploring that forever. And then the cost of not having adequate planning, right? So rushed implementation, continuously shifting the paradigm, renovating buildings that may ultimately be repurposed. So again, if we don't have proper planning, we may go in and we do an upgrade on the building and then we figure out, well, the best thing is not to house students here. It would have been better to select this other place to house students. So us having time to really study and figure out which building is the best, which one has the least cost, which will hold students, which one have the facility needs that we have for certain programs that will be in schools. So again, these are some of the things that you rush through if you don't have the proper amount of time to plan. And then here's kind of a timeline. And if you look at the first number is the timeline if it was for 12 months for one year. So you see the three, six, nine and 12. And the second number is if we'd have 24 months of planning, the six, nine, 12 and 24. And so under each, it talks about developing the timeline. So thinking through, what are the things that we need to make sure we do? Kind of backwards planning to get ready for students to join us. Assess our operations, so again, looking at buildings, looking at facilities, looking at our programs. Begin some research and empathy interviews. In the research that I've done, formal and informal conversations with leaders in both ECPS and Nash Rocky Mount, there's not been any conversations with parents, with students to talk about what are your needs. And this directly impacts them, but no one's had any conversations with any of them and that bothers them. And so for us as a district, that's just not how we want to do business. So if we're gonna, you know, if this is gonna happen, we want to make sure we go out, we meet with families, we meet with students and we talk through, what are the things that matter to them and how can we make sure that they can reach their passions and their dreams? And then the last one, under three to six months, is to begin the design process. So again, it is slow, but we believe in doing it right. And there are gonna be some missteps, but if we don't have the time to do it, there certainly will be some. And some of those missteps are pretty expensive. Under six to nine months, some of this is continuation. So continue research and empathy interviews, continue that design process of what do we want school to look like? And then begin recruitment. Because your 1,800 students, their staff members, their principals, their teachers, child nutrition, their bus drivers, we have to recruit. So one question always has popped up in our minds, so what about the staff members in Nash Rocky Mount? They wouldn't necessarily stay with Nash, would you say Nash Administrative Unit? They wouldn't stay with them. What does that look like, right? So again, we still believe in recruiting, not just a passing off. We recruit, we interview, we select and we hire. But that will be the beginning process. And then the nine to 12 months, we continue that design process, begin building, renovation, repurpose planning. And that repurpose is really around our buildings and our facilities. What do they need to be used for, what's the best method for us? And then again, that 12 to 24 month, that's when K6 or K9 scholars begin the year as ECPS students. And we could add to that K12. But again, when you see our scenarios, we've used the scenarios of K6 through K9. And these would be rising K through six and rising K through nine. We just really felt like moving students while they were in high school and asking them to come to a different high school was unfair to high school students and difficult. We don't know if that will, you know, pass muster, but that's where we felt like we wanted, at the very least, start with K6 or K9 and not to dismantle you right here in your high school career, okay? So here is projected Rocky Mount enrollments and I'm sure several of you have seen this. It shows elementary schools, Bassford, BLS Johnson, Fairview. Those are the three that have the headless numbers. If you see the total at the bottom for elementary, it's 912. For middle schools, JW Parker, 224 students. But you see at the bottom of middle schools, 330 students. And then for high school, Rocky Mount High School, you see 397 students. And at the bottom of high school, you see 475 and you see Tar River has 19. And that's their alternative program. So this is showing the enrollment.
Does this mean that our children from the Edgecombe side are being bused to Nash Central and now to Northern?
Yes, so the numbers that are there indicate the other schools.
They're being bused out of Rocky Mount into the county's community system?
I don't know if they're being bused, but that's where they're at.
That's their enrollment.
Absolutely. So I highlighted the big numbers, right? But there are 54 for Nash Central, there are eight for Northern Nash, there are 16 at the Early College and then 19 at Tar River, which is their alternative program. And then you see corresponding numbers for elementary and for middle. I highlighted in the lighter color, and forgive me, the bin binu, don't count that one. Those are the three elementary schools that we would acquire. And then JW Parker is the middle school that we would acquire, okay? So again, just wanted you to see the numbers, see what that looked like, just so as you're kind of processing through that that made sense to you.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a point of interest, if you don't know, Red Oak Elementary School would have one.
Yes, one.
If we were to build a new school and we're probably paying for schools that we have, nobody would know.
It does indicate, absolutely, okay? Absolutely, yeah, okay. Next few slides, these are the scenarios. So again, I will talk you through these. Again, these are possibilities. There are so many possibilities, but they were just four that we thought. But the first scenario talks about four different situations. Early, have an early childhood center. And the reason why we wanted this, these are possible school structures. We wanted that early childhood center because we really believe if we have some early interventions with students who are struggling academically, that that is helpful. We also get a K2 school because again, we wanted a real key focus on that early literacy, that early learning. And then a 3-8 school. And then at the bottom, you see existing ECPS high schools. Because remember, in our head, the scenario was at most K9, so rising ninth graders. So those ninth graders would join our existing ECPS school. If we only had ninth graders. Now, if it's the nine through 12, which is on the table, then we would have to adjust. And that will address that in Scenario Four. So again, Scenario One is just talking about possible school structures and avoiding multiple transitions. If you look at Scenario Two, it's showing two pre-K8 schools. So we would take two of those, two pre-K8 schools and it could be in the schools that they, the four schools that they are, that would come to us and we would create two pre-K8 schools. And then we'd funnel into our existing ECPS schools. So some would say, well, why would you want a pre-K8? It's fewer transitions. If we look at research, we know that when kids stay in a school longer, they build relationships with the teachers, they feel more comfortable. If there's some issues or concerns, you're more likely, I have you longer. We try to fix those issues or concerns. If you are moving frequently, I would get an opportunity to do that. And that's why we've changed from Tillo, Stocks and then Martin Millennium, having those three transitions before they even got to high school. So we'd want to mimic some of the things that we've already seen that have worked in Edgecombe. Scenario Three, you'd have kind of a traditional setup, pre-K through five school. And again, you see the number three, that's how many schools, three elementary schools that would come to us. And you see the 6-8 middle school, you see one 6-8 middle school. And then again, for high schools, they would join our existing ECPS high schools. Scenario Four. So Scenario Four is would be district realignment for elementary elementary schools. When Mr. Williams gets up and shares, he is gonna share with you our school capacities, what our current schools in Edgecombe can hold and what the enrollment is. So you'll see if there's some space there, what that would look like and if that would even make sense. So he'll share that with you. But again, Scenario Four, we would have to realign elementary elementary schools. And then we would assign Rocky Mount students to current ECPS schools and then existing ECPS high schools, the students for high school would come into our current high schools. So those are the four scenarios. As others come up and they share kind of their overview of finance, maintenance, they will have some of this lens, but they will tell you kind of as they're going through, what assumptions they're making as they're talking through. what assumptions they're making as they're talking through their data. So again, school structures, some scenarios for us to think about, these are not all the scenarios. We could come up with plenty of other scenarios, these are just the four. And then other items for consideration. And this list again could go on. We have a Google Doc that we've just put all the thoughts that have come to our mind. This is just a small, small summary. Transportation costs, travel time, efficiency rating, we think about transportation, athletics, six through 12, Nash Rocky Mountain staff, those that did not stay with them, an alternative program currently, we have an alternative program, would we need to have an alternative school? Maybe, maybe not. Child nutrition costs, onboarding for staff and students. If you've been in Rocky Mountain school system and you're joining Edgecombe County Public Schools, we feel like we need to have onboarding for students and staff and kind of reacclimate you to what we're doing in Edgecombe, how and the why. Community meetings, we need some focus groups, consolidation of our schools, is that something that needs to be on the table, is that something we want to think about? What makes sense and what the school board members from Nash Rocky Mountain, they currently have some members, we'd be having a large node of their population joining us, what happens with our current school board members for Edgecombe, and then what happens with Nash Rocky Mountain. And then last, school construction, because on that side of the county, we have three elementary schools, one middle school that would become ours. Also, Mr. Williams will share, there's a trial nutrition warehouse, and there's a teacher professional development center that will also be a part of this merger deal. But there was not a high school on that side of the county. And when you go further in, and he'll share with you the capacity, could we even fit those 400 students that we currently have into our schools? Could that even happen? What would that look like? What kind of concerns would that cause for us? Those are things we need to think about. Again, so time matters, and us thinking through what's best for our kids and how do we make those decisions that matters to us. Again, no conversation has been had for parents and students, and so we feel like that's not a plan. This is impacting them. We would have to start with having those conversations, doing what's right and what's best for kids, okay? I'm gonna ask Ms. Petrelli to start.
Good evening.
You got the move, you got the move, Mr. Chairman.
I was talking at 45 minutes. When I was little, I would always ask my dad and my sister, now, how much longer do we have, how much longer do we have? My dad would finally say.
It's that long as you can.
Exactly.
No, I can't hear, she can hear, yeah, I can't hear.
You are. Well, my dad would say, figure out a mile per minute, right? So I want you all to figure a minute per slide. I have about five slides, keep real quick. So I just want to give you a little context about the state of Edgecombe County Public Schools, because it is a very proud moment for us. If you look at the data from 2016 to 2019 in terms of schools that met or exceeded growth and schools that did not, you'll notice that we've made great strides, right? So we've gone from eight schools who did not meet growth to three schools who did not meet growth, but I have to say, Tar River High School was one point away, so we're gonna go ahead and count it for this year. And then 2017 to 2019, we went from four schools who exceeded to six schools that exceeded. So we're on an upward trajectory, which is very important in this context. So also keep in mind that four of the schools that we may possibly inherit are not only F schools, according to the North Carolina School Performance Scale, an F school is a school that receives a performance rating of zero to 39. So those schools are ranked at like 30 to 33, right? So it's very, it's not impossible, but just things like that could possibly be what we're inheriting. So when it comes to instruction, it is difficult sometimes in terms of number, the numbers to quantify costs, but we just want to give you some projected costs that we have discussed and thought about in various meetings, under the assumption that we are operating all four schools in Rocky Mountain, right? So that would include additional costs for reading and math curriculum, and we're not just talking about like supplementary ancillary material purchases. For example, we have a K5 literacy program called Target Advance, so that would require, again, purchasing the professional development in addition to the materials. No nonsense nurturing, which is behavior management, that would be a training, additional materials. We have invested in social emotional curriculum, we know that's a lot of our students experience trauma, that's a big part of learning, because we know kids don't learn well if they're hurt or hungry, right? So we try to address whole child needs, so that would be those curriculum costs, and then, as Dr. B mentioned, additional materials and supplies. Trying to keep to my minute and a slide now. When it comes to personnel and other professional development calls, we talked about streamlining. So again, Rocky Mountain, you'll hear Mr. Williams talk about lock systems in Rocky Mountain, lock systems in Edgecombe County, whether or not they match well, Rocky Mountain school system, they do instruction a little bit different than we do, so trying to streamline and making sure that new staff, not just Rocky Mountain staff that we may acquire, but all new staff that are on the same page with that. We're asking for an additional reading specialist and math specialist. I do want to, again, come back to the four schools that are in dire F status, and we would require and need that intense support of those students in order to bring those schools up to par. So in trying to support those intense supports, we're looking at an additional reading and math specialist, two culture and climate specialists, and in terms of testing and accountability, an entire position for power school, which handles testing and accountability. So we really want to think about not splitting, having the split support that we have for our schools, because that's helping us to continue in a positive direction about what additional support we need in order to bring those schools up to par. If you do not know, Edgecombe is proudly a one-to-one student device district, so then that comes with additional technology costs. So we're looking at another school technician, a digital learning coach for those schools. In terms of infrastructure, additional access points and servers, phones, subscription services, so that would mean like internet, phone services, our fall at library system, and then any additional student devices that we would need to purchase, because at this point, we don't know what we would get, what kind of condition would be in it, and if we have to make any additional purchases. I'm gonna now turn it over to Erin. Erin, we do a minute per slide.
We have a first slide, I got it. You got it, Erin. So as I mentioned earlier, my job title is Director of Innovation, so my job is to come up with the wild and crazy ideas here. So we are also excited, if this, if these schools become part of Edgecombe County Public Schools, we'd be excited to talk with the community. Like Dr. Bridges mentioned, we feel like this is really critical, that we would engage our community, engage parents and students to get their input and feedback on the types of learning experiences that they want for their children. As we've been considering that, we've also been thinking about some of the research we've done over the past five years, as we've redesigned our schools here in Edgecombe, and some of these ideas, I think, could potentially apply to this work in Rocky Mountain. So we've seen some 611 residential schools in some communities that have been highly effective, and so that's an idea I think we'd want to explore. Certainly redesigning the alternative program, as Dr. Bridges mentioned, for our students here in Edgecombe County and the students in Rocky Mountain. Considering a blended learning secondary school, an opportunity for middle and high school students, maybe to have a non-traditional learning experience, certainly providing comprehensive mental health support. We know that that is in need here in our Edgecombe County Public Schools, and we certainly understand that our Rocky Mountain students also deserve that type of support. We've talked a lot about school coaches, and how can we add additional capacity to our principals and our teacher leaders as they're in the process of redesigning learning experiences for kids. And then finally, you know, obviously back to what I said, to start, we want to get that input and feedback from the community, and then really dig deep and research those suggestions and take seriously that input from the community as we're making design decisions going forward, hopefully over a year or ideally two years' time, as we engage in this process of bringing those students into our town.
Do you have any questions? If you have none, I will come over to Ms. Williams.
My staff and I had an opportunity to visit a building last Monday. They did not allow us to take any photos. We could walk and go in every room or every room, and they were available to us. And one of the first things we looked at, we're gonna talk about capacity. Bullet, the actual occupancy that we have, there are 698. That's what we're supposed to, but we're over because it says 711. And you define occupancy or capacity with DPI by the amount of programs and different programs you offer in the building. So let's just say a school has carpentry, and that's calculated into the DPI capacity. But if you take carpentry out, then you lose like seven seats because you took that program away. So yes, we could get a seat for the child in that building, but DPI is gonna define that as we lost seven seats because we removed that program. So when you start removing like seats, like masonry, electrical, carpentry, home, it takes away from your overall building capacity according to DPI. Now, of course, again, your total occupancy of that building would be higher, but in DPI standards, your capacity just went down. So these are some of the numbers here. Bullet, we're at 658, so we're actually over.
Do we get paid for, from DPI for occupancy or capacity? Now that would be a lower area.
We get paid based on average state of membership, so the number of children.
All right, Cooper Whimby, we're at 257. So there's, that building will hold 294 according to DPI, so we actually have 37 seats in that facility. GW Carver, 587, but the total capacity there, that's according to DPI, 710, so you have 123 seats roughly in that building. Princeville, 179, but we have 250 acres according to DPI, which gives us 79. Starks, 496, but we have space for 518, which gives us 22 extra seats in that building. All right, this is some of the buildings that we toured. DS Johnson was the first one, it was built 1960. It has about $65,000, almost $66,000 square feet. Their student capacity there is 601, but that's based on it being used for a grade three through five. It has a cash value roughly around $9 million. But if you look at deferred maintenance on the building, it's $5 million in deferred maintenance. And what I mean by deferred maintenance is like the capital projects that need to be brought up to date for each building. So each building has a tag that was done by independent study, and this information is available on the Nash Rocky Mountain website under their capital improvement claim. So they totaled up at 5 million. Now, I talked with their maintenance director, he walked us around the building, told us, he was very upfront and honest about a lot of things. And one of the things he told us was this building needs a new chilling, which, you know, is almost a half a million dollar project to redo for a whole school. And other things, they had access control, which is the swipe access that's installed on every door that leads outside of the building. One of the big ones is the multi-purpose room, the floor needs to be abated and replaced. When you talk about abating, you're talking about asbestos. So the floor tile is popping up, so if kids use that building, you have the potential for the actual dust particles of asbestos being, coming active in the air. So that's one of the things they're gonna work on this summer. Also, they don't have ADA compliant bathrooms, which is for handicap access. So that's gonna be a big issue. If you get a kid in a wheelchair and, you know, they may complain about not being able to go to the bathroom with the grab bars, then you open yourself up for potential liability issues. Parking lots need repaving, windows need to be replaced, and the basement, the glazing around the outside of the window has been tested positive for asbestos. Fairview Elementary, this one was built 1997. It's 49,000 square feet, this one has a capacity of 450 kids, but it's only K2. So it's valued at 6 million, but this one, they have done a little bit of work too, but they only have deferred maintenance, and this one is about half a million. They completely renovated the HVAC system, they put access control all over the building, but they did not repair the roof. So that is a big issue, because you know, once your roof starts leaking, it causes other problems in your building. It needs a lot of carpet replaced, when you walk in the hallway, it smells kind of musty, and he was honest about it, and that's where that musty smell comes from, because of the fact of the carpet being so old and dated. Baskerville Elementary was built 1957, 52, 53,000 square feet, it'll hold about 427 kids if you use it for grades K through five. And it's valued at about 4 million, but if you look at the deferred maintenance, it's at 3 million. So they really haven't done a whole lot of work to this building. This one here needs a new air conditioning system. It does have access control, it does have a full metal roof on every building on that campus, but it also needs new carpet, there are a lot of potholes in the parking lot, it needs new windows, the windows do leak, they have some of the windows taped up to keep them from falling open. It needs electrical service upgrade. As we continue to add more and more technology to our buildings, it puts a low demand on our electrical service. So you start having breakers trip. You know, you have the Chromebook cards, you plug up one or two of them in one hallway, then you're liable to lose power on that whole hallway because of the low demand. So it needs a new electrical service, and it also does not have ADA compliant bathrooms, which is another issue. JW Parker, this is the larger of the four schools. It's built 1961, it's about 130,000 square feet, this one holds about 557 students if it's slated to hold middle school six through eight. It does have a cash value right around 8 million, but it still has about a little over $2 million worth of work to get it up to DPI standards. Now, they did put a new gym, they did remodel the gym, put a new gym floor in, new bleachers. This one also has access control, they did start painting some of the hallways, they replaced some carpet, but not a lot of it. It needs a new chilling system, so that's another big ticket item that we will possibly take on. The windows are positive for asbestos glazing, so that's another issue that we would have to address at some point down the road. Parking lot has not been touched. Holes all in the parking lot, the lines have not been straight. We also need to do the electrical service upgrade to this building as well. He did say they received complaints daily on the power creaking in that building. And this one here has some ADA compliant bathrooms, but in the gym area, there's none. So that means that we would have to, you know, our locker room and stuff would have to be upgraded as well. So we're looking at a total of about $11 million in deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Would you really say that the school would be neglected? I just mean, I'm not.
Yes, I would say.
That money should be appropriated to the Edgecombe County side of the track, before anybody take other control of the school.
It has, I think some of the stuff that has been, the big ticket items have been left off on purpose, I would say, because I mean, I don't think they knew what was gonna happen. So I can't speak for Mr. Asher.
They knew what was gonna happen, they just won't make plans, they just don't get nothing out of it. They're getting that money. That's crazy.
So there's $11 million in deferred maintenance on these four buildings. In addition to that, we would need more maintenance staff, because most of our guys stay on this side of the county. So we would have to actually add additional people to maintain these buildings, which would actually end up being just one in every trade, but three in the grounds department. We did a new HVAC technician, a new electrician, a new plumber, and a new hardware. There's about 35 acres of grass area that needs to be main cut and maintained, so we would need additional staff to maintain those grounds. We'd also need somebody in our maintenance office, in addition to the lady that we have now to help with inventory, because it's gonna actually, it's gonna go up considerably. We also would gain the teacher resource center, which is like a professional development center, and the child nutrition warehouse. The child nutrition warehouse has three coolers and a freezer, pretty large area, that store all their dry food in that one warehouse, and that would be part of the deal as well. The teacher resource center used to be the city of Rocky Mountain Operations Center. They totally remodeled that building, and there's nice technology inside of that building. But the conversation I had with the director, I think some of that technology is gonna be removed before we get it. So I don't know how that's supposed to work, but that was the conversation he and I had. We also have to think about cleaning the building, as far as custodial staff. Right now, this is what they have, they have two full-time, two part-time at Baskerville, there's two full-time, two part-time at DS Johnson. Fairview's a smaller school, it has two full-time, one part-time. And then Parker has three full-time and one part-time, because it's the largest of the four. Here's some of the considerations for maintenance. We have a key system. Our key system is totally different from what they have. So we would have to potentially get, all those buildings, all six of them rekeyed by a master locksmith to the ECPS key system. And if you think about school security, let's just say we keep theirs, but we don't know who has keys in there. You know, because if they say, well, you just take this, this is ours, it works. It does work, but we don't, we have no way of maintaining who has access and who does not. Other than on the door to have the swipe access control, but every door, you know, if you have a key on it, they can get in, get in with swipe. if you have a key on it, they can get in, get in with swipe. Um, security cameras. You know, we have to be able to get them out of that system where they can't log in and continue to monitor what's going on. Or be able to make them go dark, so that people can do what they want to, insofar as going in and out of the building. Uh, there's a potential, there's potential for that. Um, will their, will National Rocky Mount door access control merge with ECPS? We have access control on our high schools right now and the early college. Will we have to buy another license for each one of those buildings? Or will it merge with ours? I don't think it will because it was installed by two different companies, but that's also something we have to take over and maintain. HVAC controls. We control our air conditioning from our laptops at the office. So if you call and say you want the heat on, we can turn it on without having to come to the building physically. Our is Johnson Controls, there is, he wouldn't tell me the company, but it's not Johnson Controls. So that's another licensing issue that we're going to have to purchase for six more buildings. Which can get fairly expensive. You're talking at least five to six thousand dollars per building, depending on how many phases they have inside that building. Um, new maintenance vehicles, because if you add more staff, we're going to have, have to add more vehicles, especially lawn equipment. And furniture and technology, the, um, PD center that they have, it's nicely renovated, has nice furniture, that's where they hold all their principal meetings. I don't know if they hold board meetings, but I know they hold all their principal meetings there. And it was mentioned that that furniture would be removed prior to it being turned over. I don't know how true, but that's just what he said. So that would be a big cost to us to furnish that building. Any questions?
So Ms. Lyra and I would like to take a few minutes to share with you regarding the financing, finances and the staffing matter. So when we look at staffing and funding considerations, we'll yet again work under the assumption that Edgecombe County Public Schools will continue to operate the three elementary schools, the one middle school, and then receive, uh, the high school students into our current high schools. So with the core staffing projections, we're looking at just that, the core. We're not looking at an exhaustive list of staff, but the essential staff in order to keep the schools moving forward and in operation. We want to talk with you this evening through three different categories. Category one being, uh, the administrative positions. Category two being the certified teaching positions. And then category three being the classified positions, which are non-teaching positions.
Um, we want to also share that on the next three slides, you can see dollar amounts attached to those positions. Um, but at the end, you'll see a slide that will summarize all those costs and what's how to compare it to what may lead to staying allotment for those possible positions.
So when we look at core staffing for elementary schools, the students in grades K through five, the number that we're focusing on yet again is nine hundred and twelve students. With the three categories of staff, looking at school administrators, we would maintain three principals, a principal for each of the elementary buildings. Three assistant principals, looking at certified teaching staff, who would maintain approximately fifty-eight classroom teachers, and that would be spread over the three elementary schools. Six enhancement teachers, which consists of your music, your art, and your health and PE. School counselors at three, media coordinators at three. Looking to the right-hand side, when we talk about classified staff or those non-teaching positions, yet again, we would have a bookkeeper for each of the elementary schools, a school data manager for each of the elementary schools, seven teacher assistants, because teacher assistants are allotted or allocated, uh, based on kindergarten classrooms. And then custodians, as Mr. Williams just shared with us earlier. Six full-time, five part-time for the elementary schools, which translates into eight point five FTEs. Staffing for our middle schools, grade six through eight, the number that we're looking at yet again is three hundred and thirty students. When we look at the three categories of staff, we would maintain one building principal, one assistant principal, for certified teaching staff, looking at the classroom teachers at fourteen. The enhancement teachers, which again would be your music, your art, your health and PE at three. One school counselor, one media coordinator. And then looking to the right of the slide, the non-teaching positions, which would maintain one bookkeeper, one data manager, an in-school suspension coordinator, or restorative justice, as we now call them oftentimes, at one. And then custodians at three full-time, one part-time, which translates to three point five FTEs. And then lastly, looking at the high schools, this is based on four hundred and ninety-four students. We talked about the four hundred and seventy-five, which would be in the traditional high school setting. And then I think it was approximately nineteen, which currently are in the alternative program or alternative school in National Rocky Mount. That gives us the number of four hundred and ninety-four. So those three categories of staff, school administrators, you'll notice that there is not a principal listed because they will blend into the current high school. But there's an assistant principal listed at one. Certified teaching staff, looking at our classroom teachers at eighteen, to help accommodate our high school students. Enhancement teachers at five, school counselors two. And then non-teaching positions, the school bookkeeper would not require an additional position. Uh, the school data manager would not require an additional position. And the in-school suspension coordinator would not require an additional position.
So on this slide, we're attempting to take those estimated costs and compare it to a projected amount that we made this evening state allotment for those number of students. So we summarized all the elementary, middle and the high school, um, into that. Now, as a reminder, as you heard me say, you know, um, Ms. Chairman, Williams asked about how do we see my funding? Most of it is driven by AB and the average state of membership in the school. Some allotments are different than that, and I all over that way. So, and in some of those allotments, you know, we receive our funding in many different categories. And some of them are funded through position and months of employment allotments, and some of them are a dollar allotment. Which means that you have to stay within the number of positions, no matter the cost. You don't have to worry about the cost of them, you stay within the number of positions. A dollar allotment means we have to stay within those dollars. So the first one you have here is a principal. So if we were estimating four principals at four hundred and eighteen thousand, the state will give you twelve months of an allotment for a principal for any school number we have. So if we have four school numbers, we would receive four principal positions. On the assistant principal, however, we're looking at five possible APs at four hundred and fourteen thousand. The state doesn't allot you one AP for each school number you have. They allot you one AP based on, um, ninety-eight point fifty-three students. So the number of students that we have would earn, um, one point fifty-five of a position, with APs being employed for eleven months. So that would fall short by three point forty-five positions. On classroom teachers and enhancements, they fund that by positions. So we calculated based on, it varies by each grade level, how they calculate those number of positions. That would equate to about eighty-three, based on the scenario we put together, we would be short twenty-one classroom positions. Counselors and mediars are also funded by a position allotment. We would be, um, based on the numbers we have, we would generate eight positions for that, and we are estimating ten, so we'd be short two. Non-instruction support, I blumped those bookkeepers, the data managers, the custodians are all in that non-instruction support allotment. So in all that, it was twenty-one positions at an average cost of, um, using average, average of nine twenty-seven. And the extra funding we would receive would be four fifty-seven, with a shortfall of four hundred and seventy thousand. But as soon as I say that, I will also qualify back to say that these, um, number of positions we've estimated by school is without digging deeper into those children and really knowing more, um, information on them. And I also have not considered at this time any, um, private impact, uh, wealth allotment, nor adverse student allotment that we traditionally use for clerical support and assistant principals and things like that.
So just a few other additional staffing considerations for us. Looking at the school level, uh, once again, the original numbers that we shared with you was not an exhaustive list, it was more the essential. But looking at the school level for certified, as Ms. Betrel shared, when we look at curriculum specialists, the needs for supporting students who are from schools, uh, with an F, um, that would be something that we would certainly need to dig deeper into. Student support, uh, such as school nurses and social workers. Looking at our special populations of students, which is often like a fluid number. Uh, how many students would we have qualified for the exceptional children's program? How many students may qualify for English as a second language? Uh, how many students might we have that would qualify for academically intellectually gifted programming? Also looking at CTE and, uh, JROTC staff. When we look at the classified positions, uh, as shared earlier, we would need to take into consideration the child nutrition staff needs. Uh, looking at custodial staff, as Mr. Williams shared with us earlier. Looking at bus drivers, looking at, uh, instructional support, what additional clerical support may be needed. And then last but certainly not least, what, uh, staffing considerations may there be at the district level, such as the technology technicians, as Ms. Betrel referenced. Uh, with the devices, we would need support to keep those up and going. Human resources support, when we look at the teachers, uh, who may be hired, uh, who may fall into the beginning teacher support program. How do we support, uh, that particular cadre of professionals? Central office clerical support, maintenance staff and finance specialists.
I didn't know if those, those numbers, were they based on whether employees in Edgecombe County Public Schools are current inmate or National Rocky Mount?
Um, on the calculations for the salaries, I, I used for the, um, classified, the average salary that we have in Edgecombe County Public Schools. For certified, I used the teacher's salary scale, um, out of step two on the range. So that would be true for any of the students.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
About the first, get before you. Um, we've been using the number of four hundred and seventy-five seniors, I mean, the high school period. How many of seniors have you all figured out yet?
I don't know the exact numbers, but we serve that.
Okay. Again, we are trying to gather the information, and that's a moving target, right? So the number of seniors this year, last year, and next year is not going to be the same. So those are the targets, right? So even if we got the numbers for this year, and if it didn't happen this year, we have to look and say, okay, the year that it would happen, those would be the number of seniors we have to look at. So last, any other questions? So last slide, just a quick summary, and again, you've heard from curriculum, you've heard from motivation, you've heard from maintenance, uh, finance and HR, just, um, the plethora of things that would have to happen. You haven't heard from transportation, child nutrition, uh, you haven't heard from our principals or our other staff members about how this might impact them. Um, and so for us, we've got, you know, this is one of the meanings that we'll need to have to have about this topic. Um, but I will go back to our ideal, for students to remain, um, as they are in National Rocky Mount. The next best, ECPS would need twelve to twenty-four months for planning to get this right. And then the bullets that are under that, um, these are things that we think are important. The community engagement, we, again, we feel like we have to talk to parents, to students, to teachers, that this would impact directly. Um, school structure, so you saw those four scenarios. Which one works best for us, and then how do we make sure that's the right thing for our students after we have those empty interviews and talk to parents and, and students? Exceptional learning experiences, we don't just want to bring in eighteen hundred, twelve hundred, or a hundred students and just do business as usual. If you pay attention to what we do in Edgecombe, we want the best for our kids. Does it always happen? No, but we're striving for that. Um, so you see innovative practices happening, um, sometimes it's in small numbers, and we rebuild out from there to get it right. Um, and then resource termination. We have to make sure we're using our resources wisely and we're doing the best things for students. So that's, again, um, our summary slide. You've heard from many folks who are working on this process and thinking through it. They're doing that along with their current job, and so, and when you saw that slide, it said, we would need some additional hands if this is what we're looking to make that work in twelve to twenty-four months. Again, because they still have to continue to run Edgecombe County Public Schools, the fourteen schools that we have. Um, and if we're going to experience that type of influx, we have to get it right. We don't want to rush it, but we have to get it right for kids. Questions or feedback? Um, and I will say for our staff, um, many of them, there are many questions that you may have tonight that we just don't have the answer to, right? Um, these are assumptions, they're scenarios, nothing's written in stone. We don't know all the answers, but we're willing to, to hear your questions. Um, and if we need to get back together to address the questions that you have, we will be glad to do that.
Well, I guess I can, we, I think this is a good beginning in terms of what the board needs to know. Uh, what we do know is that we've got legislation that is going to require us to, uh, do things, uh, for the National Rocky Mount school system that we have not done. What we also know is that none of the capital improvement money that we've sent to the National Rocky Mount school system has gone there to the Edgecombe side of Rocky Mount.
That's right.
And what we also know, if we continue as we're doing, the schools in the Edgecombe County system will continue to, in the Edgecombe, Black Rock, will continue to deteriorate. That's what we do know, that's based on the history of what's happened to us. Our board has, our board, he has not taken any official action in terms of, of what would happen. What we do know financially is that it will not happen this year, okay? But I think we need to charge the school board, or schools, or staff to continue to work on the possibility of this, that this could happen. Uh, personally, this is just me speaking. We cannot continue to do real schools in the Nash County school system, uh, with our children, with our children, and continue to pay for them, and that price is going up, it's continuing to up. Um, so as I said, uh, our board has not had the discretion, we do know that we have to, it's a triggering mechanism in this bench, okay? So regardless of what we do, it will be in compliance, okay? As I look at it, okay, as I look at it, um, I'm, I'm trying to look at it when I said that, I was, okay? But, uh, but that's what I think it reads, so figure out the trajectory. It didn't come from our board, either of our board members in terms of what we have heard. Go ahead.
I noticed the numbers, especially on the northern end of the county, during the, this on the school. Um, I wanted to know, had you or the board started thinking about what you would, what the cost of maintaining those schools with those low numbers?
So we have had some discussion, but not with our board specifically. We've talked about the numbers, we certainly have seen those numbers, the dwindling, um, and that's a concern. Um, so then we were talking about some of the, um, rebanking, that may be a possibility. Um, we certainly can pull those numbers for each of those schools, Hope, Phillips and Moore, and see what that looks like. Um, if this comes into play, I think that is something that's on the table for further discussion. Uh, what does that need to look like, and what, what makes sense? Um, because sometimes it doesn't make sense to maintain as we have so far. So we may have to look at that a little bit.
And I'm really concerned about broadband down the area, if you add any more students. I already can't make a call when I go to Phillips, okay?
Absolutely.
You really can't make a call. So our students are not getting what the other side of the county is getting that far. So broadband is something we would really have to work on before we can add any more students, add any more technology down there.
Right, and we're aware of that problem. So our, our director's making, uh, uh, technology, he is going on that. He's processing like how to eliminate some of those concerns. We won't speak to that tonight, but that, we are aware of that and trying to alleviate and fix, how can we make this better? And sometimes that support has to come from outside, but we don't have.
Relax. To, uh, Ms. Wilson, I wanted to know, has, um, the school board talked to anyone about the possibility of the district coming within the school district?
No, we have not talked about the street district.
But if this happened, that would create.
If this happened, it would create.
That would create.
A little bit.
That would create a complete district.
And that's why we showed you the numbers for the actual enrollment capacity. Because that would, you know, that would possibly generate some movement. And again, that scenario number four is, would be realigned, redistricted, a lot of our school system that we currently have.
I saw, I heard the need for three schools over in the Edgecombe County side. Would that also include a renovating of the two high schools, Northern, North, and North, Tower, and Southwest? If we bring in more high school students?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If, if there was a need, if there was a need for all the students to come back to Edgecombe County, would that mean you would have to renovate the two, the three high schools? Would that accommodate?
So, how, not necessarily, but I leave that to Mr. Williams to know.
North would need it, because it has the size to, was to stand about another hundred and fifty to two hundred kids. Southwest would. Tower High would not need anything additional. We probably would have to move like the, what's the program, Hope? We would have to move, if we were to like move them to another building, it could handle. But North would not need it.
I think we're talking immediately in terms of, those of us on that side, you kind of think we're using school on that side. So we're talking about things that, other things that we have to completely work out in terms of where we spend our money. What we, what I do know is that education, we have a part, kind of responsibility. And right now, the education of our children, especially those in the Rock and Rock system, not even getting the capital improvement, and, and we have failed. I wouldn't say failed, but we have done the best we, we as a board have provided that. We have fallen short in terms of our funding, but we have funded what we thought we could budget-wise. And we have to do a better job in terms of prioritizing where our funding is. And we think we're going to get there. We think the potential growth that we see for our community, that a lot of things that have not been happening, we think that financially we're going to, we would get there. And I'm hoping to see a lot of things happen that maybe has not been happening for our county. Those of us that know what things are going to happen and it's been hard to do that. But I do think this was an immediate conversation we need, we need to start a public conversation on. And I think a plan of action in terms of, we need community groups that we need to talk to, we need to talk to parents, we need it. Because it's not going to be as easy to say it can happen, because there's going to be a lot of, some resistance to that too. Because I've been here all of my life, and I've never gone through the Edgecombe County School System because that is a Rocky Mount School System, okay? And those of us that came up in the Rocky Mount School System. And so a lot of those things have to be worked through. We have a board members that have influence. This is not my need, this is our rule. But we do have, without any, some, some administrative officials and others from Rocky Mount.
Thank you for being here, thank you so much. I'm Ruben Blackwell, we're Rocky Mount City Council, and have been on the council since two thousand. And tonight in our meeting, we've had a public comment, and we continue to have. It seems that public is just awakening to the understanding that this is taking place, which is unfortunate. And I can say for one, that several of us in Edgecombe, Rocky Mount have been advocating for years for appropriate investment in the physical plants of these schools that are located in Edgecombe, Rocky Mount. We have not seen it. We have continually been told by the Nash County Commissioners that appropriate investments are made. And I for one appreciate hearing the level of benign neglect that has continued for years that our children have had to live in. And to me, this speaks to the level of priority that has not been placed on children that live in inner city communities in Rocky Mount. And if you won't fix the building up, I have no confidence that you even care about the children who are involved, as much less the staff and the other professionals that work with the system. And we have at the city council level been active investors for years in this collaboration between all of our elected bodies. And we have advocated for continual collaboration. And I for one am more impressed by what I've heard tonight about the structure, the level of priority that Edgecombe County Public Schools have had on the placement of resources and your approach towards education and physical plant capacity than I have seen in others. And frankly, and I know this might not be politically correct, but it's the truth. It's the truth. Priorities have not been placed on students who live inside the city limits of Rocky Mount, both Edgecombe and Nash. And I just have to say that. Because when you look at all of the schools within the city limits of Rocky Mount, with the exception of Rocky Mount High School, which we paid for a tax increase in Edgecombe County. And we were promised, Nash Rocky Mount and Nash County Commissioners, that that investment would stay in Edgecombe County Schools. And it helped build a high school in Rocky Mount, Nash County. And all I can say is, I for one am not pleased with what I see. I hope we have sincere and serious conversation. The Nash County Commissioners shackled Rocky Mount City Council's hands in investing, continuing the investment in this partnership. We were willing to pay the difference for Edgecombe County, per rad of share for ADM. And we were shackled while the rest of the General Assembly passed laws that said it was appropriate for cities to be involved in school systems. So in my opinion, we need some reckoning of what's appropriate public engagement and some conversation about what we're all going to do together. And I appreciate the fact that, and I say I because I'm joined with my fairly new council member, Richard John. And what we have contended for years is that this has been sabotage for Rocky Mount to not be as competitive as a city for young families that are growing and investing and looking for places to live. And all I can say with the recent activities that are phenomenal within Edgecombe County and Rocky Mount City proper, this is a wonderful opportunity to begin looking at how we're planning forward. And I would advise us to not look at things in silos anymore. To not just say, this is the county's responsibility, this is the city, this is the school board. It's all of our responsibility to build communities that people can live in, that children can prosper in, and they can go to school and be healthy and have a great education and want to live in our community. So thank you for allowing me to talk. I know my councilman might have something to say, I'm not assuming that I take all the air out of the room. But I want to, I want to thank you for having these conversations. I just say, don't play, please. Let's, let's, let's not play politics. Let's do what's right for our kids and our communities, and we'll support you.
Just want to dito what councilman said. And it continues that we are doing listening sessions in our ward to hear what our citizens are saying and hope that we can expand our listening sessions to invite you to come in, to sit with our residents, to hear their concerns as we move forward. Just thank you for what you're doing. I consider myself Tower or Edgecombe County, even though I'm in Rocky Mount. You have our support.
I would ask if our school board members, any of you have any questions at this time on any topic we've discussed tonight?
I want to thank you and the group, Dr. Bridges, for not only looking at the dollar signs tonight, but to look at the school system with children and students. I mean, I, I think that's what's, what we miss in the equation. And I think that's the most important thing to put forward. And if we, if we put those children first, then everything else is going to fall into place.
I want to ask a question, was there any conversation about why? And I, I'll just call it negligence, on the schools on this side of the track, that they were telling me what the payables were needed for and what the conditions of the schools were? Was there anything that they would say that gave you any, any idea why it wasn't there?
His, his words to me was that it wasn't on their prioritized list that they come up with as a district.
So that means the children were being neglected?
Yeah, it wasn't on their, it wasn't, they have, they come up with a prioritized list each year, and it always, it's something always trumped.
It was, I'm just trying to get my gun loaded, because. I, I'm searching somewhat, you have reported to us. That's the bottom line, that the schools on this side of the track are neglected. Which means the students have been neglected.
Correct.
Ms. Cameron?
Yes.
May I have a question?
Without an objection from the school business?
I'm wrapping Roseback Higgs, and I want, I'm going to put a different spin on this whole equation. And Witten, you said you've never attended a school in the county. I never attended an integrated school. School integrated the year after I closed, I mean, after my school closed. But I saw the kids make the transition, and it is where it is today. I'm very disappointed, y'all, that this bill was passed in twenty sixteen, and now we're talking about six months before July the first. And everybody wanted to come with, I consider excuses, we haven't met here, we haven't met with that group. What in the hell you been doing for three and a half years? We know the bill was, you know the bill was there. Y'all agreed to the bill, y'all agreed to, to four-year delay.
Excuse me, brother. This, this board did not agree to this bill.
But what I'm saying, y'all.
I don't, I don't intend to get in an atmosphere of, with.
Y'all sitting in the room, anyway, the bill passed, so what I'm saying, the bill has hit dominant for four years. Y'all knew it was coming. Matter of fact, y'all should have known in ninety when, when your merit certificate was coming. So I think y'all should thank the Lord that you got away with it as long as you did. Those kids on that Edgecombe County side of that track, they're Edgecombe County students, just like the rest of it. What I don't want to see happen is just call those schools are F performing schools, that those kids get labeled coming in to the Edgecombe County system. It's not fair to them, it's majority of them are black. So y'all need to find a way to not try to stir away and blame Nash County for conducting their financial responsibility. Edgecombe need to step up your game and do a better job at serving the damn people, y'all, before we represent. No, I'm done, those are my comments. And I'm talking to every, every elected official sitting around this table. What you just doing last year, you been there for twenty years, y'all saw all of this coming. And you did nothing to, to try to prepare yourself for it. And it, and it's a shame. You got to learn to be proactive and not continue to react. And you been sitting on the bill for four years and come in here tonight and act like you got to go do this and do that. It's a shame.
I didn't tell about me that I, the bill is what it is. And the bill, the school system can remain as is. So there is no immediate action for this board to take. The reason for this meeting is, is that, if in fact it does happen, that our school system can plan for it to happen. It might not ever happen, okay? So that is the reason for this meeting. In terms of our obligation to the children, in Edgecombe County, Rocky Mount, we have fulfilled those obligations. We, the county, we, the school board, has fulfilled those obligations in terms of the funding required. All of those obligations. So none of what I have just heard is the truth.
But when you were on the board, when it went in place and died in one.
You are out of order.
I'm out of order, but you're out of order.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, will you remain out of order? I'm going to ask you to leave. If you remain, if you get out of order, I'm going to ask you to leave. No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, you have no other comment in this meeting.
Well, it'll be, it'll be an optimum time.
You would, you would have no more comment in this meeting.
Right, it'll be an optimum time, it won't be this meeting. I respect, I respect this meeting.
Yes, sir, please do.
But y'all ain't too, they ain't.
Hold it, you still out of order. I'm not, I don't want to have to take another action.
No, you're good, you're good.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
But this is not the end, this is just the beginning.
We can handle that.
Okay.
We can handle that, okay. Is there any other?
I just want to commend them in the audience. I just want to commend Dr. Bridges and the staff who are pulling together the data. If you're going to fix something, you got to start with the end in mind. And the numbers and figures and everything that you got is so nice and comprehensive. Anybody could understand it, and thank you so much, because now, you know, the, the planning of it, it takes a lot to do what, where we, where we are. This is twenty nineteen, we're twenty twenty. And I, I really appreciate those figures, and I, I grew up in Edgecombe County Schools. It's amazing to see the things that have evolved and the things that we've got to be accountable for. But we got the right data, and we got a place to start. So if you start with the end in mind, which means to make every child champion and successful for the global society, you started us with what we needed, and we can all sit together and begin to start finding ways to make it happen. Thank you so much.
Dr. Bridges, I think your report takes back, okay? In terms of the fact that you're researching, I think this is an excellent start. This is not necessarily emergency, this is to prepare us in case something does happen. Is there any other business to go forward with? If not, I'll take a motion for my board to adjourn. Questions, all in favor, if there's nobody else standing out?
Aye.
Or opposed, non-discussing?
I would ask someone on our board to offer a motion to close this meeting. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will end this meeting. Any other discussion or emotion? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same side.